Today is March 17, 2022. I'd like to bring the Planning Commission meeting for the Village of Leonard to order. I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to say a short prayer for making the right and just decisions for the village and for world peace to help end the conflict in Ukraine. Amen. Okay. Since Doug's not here, I'm gonna just go ahead and call the roll call. Paul Almonte. Les McKenna here. Doug Noaker, absent with excuse. Jennifer Swag here. And Lori Zalnack. Okay. Now, I would like to have everyone, you know, it's been since November. If anyone has the chance to review the minutes from November 18th, we could take a minute to look them over. If not, we can make a motion. I'll give you a minute to review them.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from November 18th, 2021.
I will second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then I would like to take a look at the agenda. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as provided.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm double dutying here, so give me a second. Okay. I guess I just wanna note who's in the audience today. We have Judy Verrs and Scott Zalnack. Now, I do have, I'm gonna just make a statement. I was gonna say, there's some things on the agenda that... Well, let's just say that if I say, is there any audience business? The audience business would probably be about the pond, and that's on the agenda, so we'll address it at that time. So is there any other audience business? So, hearing none, I'll move along. Planning Commission business. Just a little update on the sidewalk. There is some grant matching going on in the background for the donation or be... In someone's will, the whole monies that came for the park. We're going to be able to get the sidewalk in front of the park and with matching funds, extend it towards town. So that's in the works, and if we get any updates soon, we'll see what the timetable is gonna be when the planning, the village council lets us know.
That's exciting, because we were saying if we got one thing done the first year, it would be like a triumph for us.
Right.
So it's just like serendipity that this worked out.
Right.
That we're actually, I think, once we start making some headway, you never know what's gonna happen after that.
Right, well, that's exciting, because that was basically our goal for the whole year of last year. So, next, any other discussion on the sidewalk? Anybody have any more comments? Moving on, we have some village residents that are going to present their site plan for a pond. Now, at this time, I just wanna explain that the residents include Lori Zalnack, who is the, on the Planning Commission. So she has stated publicly and in paper that she... There may be a conflict of interest if we have to go to a vote, and it would be up to the Planning Commission to allow her to vote on her own topic. If there's any questions, they can be addressed to Lori, but she can only answer questions. She can't give her comments to us. So it's just, maybe the best way would be if I notice anything start to happen where it's heading in the wrong direction, I'll ask the question, be addressed to me, and I'll pass it back. And then I could address Lori if there's an issue. But I don't, I mean, it's a friendly meeting. We'll just try and keep it as cool as we can. So at this time, Lori's gonna step on the other side of the...
Be an audience member.
Audience, and be an audience member and presenter. We're ready.
Questions? Thank you. How you doing, folks? Just for the record, 4716 Forest Street. Lori and I have lived there since 2014. As you guys are probably aware, we've been here since that timeframe. We do a lot of work on our property. Understand, and I think you guys do understand, I think Les and you do even more now, if you walk their property. We literally live in a hole. The elevations range all over the map, all the way around our property. There are seven parcels, seven residents that live north and across the street on the west side. There are water drains at the front towards the ditch, and that water drains towards where west and the new neighbors, I don't know their, I can't even pronounce their last name, but there's a pipe that goes under the road. This pipe, so we understand we're all on the same playing field, there's two. There's that one, and there's one at the other section of west and in this property. Those pipes go under the road, and they dump all the water. One far south dumps onto Chris's property, which, if you look at the elevations, or I should say the decline, how that is, it goes directly north towards my property, and it sits. The other pipe goes directly into the road, and it got extended because of the amount of dirt we took in four years ago. We cannot block that pipe according to an engineer that we paid to tell us why we had all this water. And first and foremost, as you're aware, the water drain is supposed to be being maintained by the open coven. They are not. There's three or four trees down there right now that have been there for over three years. I have photos and videos where they're supposed to be coming out checking, and they're supposed to be maintaining that ditch. The engineer identified there's so much erosion that the water that sits on the backside of my property doesn't make it to the watershed, so it drains. This in itself causes the problems in the back half of my property, which is approximately acre and a half. That water sits, it overflows onto the private road behind me, which is Judy's residence and the other three residents that live back there. The water also drains from John's farm field into that area right there, which obviously going to the drainage ditch is supposed to leak. Well, it does not. Now, we got Chris's farm field and Chris's property with his pot. That water makes it to the watershed, or excuse me, the ditch, it doesn't make it out. And I take that pipe, and you take all that water that's coming from all the residents, it ends up at the back half of my property. We've noticed since some of the improvements we've done that it really is not a pond, it's called, terminology that I'm aware of through some engineers, friends of mine, this is a retention pond. This isn't made to go swimming or fishing, even though there's tadpoles and stuff in there. This is to retain the water that's coming in across the road, Chris's farm field, and it pools there. The problem is, it's not deep enough, and it's not wide enough, and it's overflowing. I actually have current video that shows it coming out of like a fire hose, dumping and spewing out to the back half of my property, which ends up overflowing into, I guess for language, it's a marsh, which is in between the private road, water drain, and my property. We're trying to keep all the extra water from flooding our backyard so that we can actually utilize it for starters, but keeping that water in one spot. So the expansion of this and the depth that we would go to would hopefully maintain all that water inside of there, not overflowing, but we maintain an overflow pipe because this engineer told us back in '14, you can't stop that pipe, we have to allow that water to flow. So if I stopped the pipe, and I, as an example, built high walls, and I made all the water stay there, it would backflow to the other side, and then I would be in violation of state law. So we're trying to avoid all of that. The dirt that's gonna be pulled, if you see the elevations and the sheets that we provided, you'll see a wide range where it's like difference of maybe five or six feet. That's how low it is in one spot in my backyard, and that's because of the water that doesn't leave the yard. And so what we're trying to do is make it level. So the ultimate, we're talking maybe a foot of dirt that's gonna level out my entire backyard back there. It doesn't seem, well, it sounds like a lot, but it's really not a lot because the depths that are there, 97 and 98 feet are the standard. It's still way high on other sides. So we're not trying to, as an example, like a pitching mound, we're not trying to do that so it pushes out toward our neighbors and causing problems for them. We're just leveling it so we can utilize it. As you guys know, we have a nice fluffy dog. I've given him four baths this week. That's how bad our backyard is. So in essence, all we're trying to do is keep the water in one spot, one spot, and that's it. And it's a retention pond, not a pond. Okay?
Okay.
Questions?
No, well, we'll reserve the rate, like as we review this, we're gonna have a dialogue of any questions you have.
Of course.
As we go through it.
Thank you.
I guess we should, I should go through it to explain to the Planning Commission because the village president and I reviewed the site plan. So I'll go through it so that all of us are on the same page. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read their proposal. Pipe deposits water runoff from the west side of Forest Street onto my property, and that's the seven properties he's talking about that go through the ditch. It is an extensive hill that goes down. During heavy rains and snow melt, the volume is substantial, and the water pools in low-lying area. In an effort to mitigate erosion and accommodate the seasonal influx of water, we propose increasing the size and depth of the area where the water pools. Currently, the dimensions are 152 feet long by 51 feet wide at the widest point, with a depth between 0 and 5 feet. A section at the east end would be widened to an additional 35 feet west and extends southwesterly toward the widest point at 45 feet. The project would also include the removal of invasive fragmites, and the excavated soil will be used to improve the grade of a low-lying area on the northeast portion of the property while it will be seeded within 30 days. Expected duration of the excavation is two days. So to talk about, I'll keep reading the next pages after we look at the the site plan of their property probably would be first. You've got, their house is listed here, and the elevations, starting at the house, the average elevation is 1,007 feet, and in increments, you can see that it goes down towards the back. So it's 104, 102. The low spot near the pond is 996. It goes back up to 999, but it keeps going, 993, 995. And it continues to flow back towards what, where the Leonard drain is. Now, what the Leonard drain is, is it's, it's right now frozen. It looks like, I don't know, it's about eight feet wide, six or eight feet wide, and it looks like a little river.
I have part of it, too.
Do you? Okay. Wait, and by your house?
I have the backside over here.
Oh, okay.
By the pally end, yeah.
Have you ever been back there to see that?
Back to my yard.
It comes back by you, too. Okay, well, it's, it's like a river, and Lori's property ends, I did take the picture, it ends about four feet from where the drain starts. And I believe that there's easement wider than that that backs to their property.
Okay.
So it's, it's right there at the back. Any water that would be in their yard, overflow would make it to the Leonard drain theoretically. But the saturation problem and some of the erosion, I don't think all of it is making it there. But that is the natural grade of the land. Now, in the, in the drawing where it says marsh, Lori's property doesn't go right to the edge of Porter Lane. There is a wet, wet marsh there. The other side of Porter Lane is designated wetlands. And I think we could look in here. I don't know which page it's on. We'd have to look through the maps. But it is designated, the other side as wetlands, and there's a little bit, I think, where the marsh is on that side as wetlands, too. But I don't think it's on their property. Do you know if the wetlands?
No, ma'am, it is not. Actually, we walked it when the ice was frozen a week ago, and there's actually a site pole that's...
Lakeville?
The property state. It's circular in circumference, and it's got a welded tab on the top of it. So where we can kinda walk, and where we've been trying to establish, it's approximately 10 to 12 feet away from our actual border of our property, so I got 10, 12 feet all in the water, starting from the back of my barn, going back and hanging all the way through.
Okay. So, so to speak, all this, all this does drain that way already. But what, what's happening is there's pooling water where it dips down to the lower number. So what they plan to do is, if you look at the size of the pond, the sides, I can point to it on here for you.
Here.
Yeah, they're gonna enlarge that.
Extend it.
Right, so they're gonna take the dirt. Do you see the dotted square?
It's a 35 by 40.
The 35 by 40. Right, right here, this square. They're gonna enlarge the pond right there. So this is how big it is right now. They're just gonna enlarge it that much.
And that's all open right now. It's just grass.
I actually just cut it, you'll see the stump sticking above, because Mr. Meek is my excavator. He said he'd need three to four feet above the ground because it's easier for him to pull it out. But that tree was dead. I didn't, I was opposed to cutting him, and she's like, we need to cut the tree. It's worth the stone.
It's obviously waterlogged.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's been dying for a couple of years now, so...
Yeah.
Well, actually, all our trees, I don't mean to, all of our trees are dying because of the amount of water and the invasive, Lori, with the cold fire.
There's, there's, there's all, there's so many invasives on our property, you know.
They're everywhere.
It's the, you're talking about the glossy boughed part in the back?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's a whole nother.
So they plan on digging it, and some parts, on the section that's closer to the road, the part that's even parallel with their house, that is walkable right now. You can walk there, it is, you know, it's a little bit, it's, but it's real marshy.
But because the retention pond's not deep enough.
It's water, and there's like fragmites there, yeah. So they're gonna dig a little deeper, a little bit deeper there, too. Or, you know, and then they're taking that dirt from digging it from zero to five feet down to the deepest part, eight, or whatever they can get out of there, they're gonna move the dirt over to this whole area over there. The 993 section, bring that back up. From the 999, it goes down to 993, so there's space there to even that out.
Gotcha.
So...
What is the elevation behind that low area of, for dirt?
Can I see where you're looking?
The, the full, like the wooded part that's at the back here.
It keeps going down.
You know, from, from your low area to the drain.
Well, we stop right there because this is the projection for where the dirt's gonna go.
Yeah.
They're not gonna raise that, yeah.
Well, I sink, actually, like, I walked in a spot, so where the drainage pipe is at, the overflow pipe that I have, that was literally one foot deep when I dug it out two years ago. I actually stepped in it, you know, on the ice and fell through it, up to my knee.
It's marshy.
The whole back half of the property is so much underwater, but there's lots, I like this word, is there's lots of obstructions, and it's because of how it sits, or I'm backing on a tractor, am I riding a lawnmower? It just, it's sinking.
So you're not, I mean, by adding dirt to this low area, you're not making...
A berm that'll make it not flow.
Yeah, there's no berm from the house to... I mean, you're not stopping the flow, but it's still...
We're just, we're making it flat, just like the tape. That's all we're doing. And then back here, there's lots of woods.
And that's why it's not going through.
Right, and that's where the invasive species are, too. We're trying to clean it up to save a few of these horrible trees that are back there. But we gotta keep the water in this retention pond so it's not overflowing for our whole property.
Because the back of that, you can't even walk through it right now.
So, right.
Yeah, we, same thing.
We would not have, that is something that will never be...
I'm sorry, how is that?
No intention of ever touching it. Actually, it's a good ecosystem back there.
So this pipe is right here, that's the overflow.
You know, all kinds of stuff that I actually enjoy. That's why I'm trying to get rid of the glossy bough.
It's gonna state it has...
Because I'd like to, you know, introduce like native species.
They transited.
That'll be like a...
So if we could catch it from the road going...
Yeah, that would never happen.
It's got a one inch by one foot grave.
Wait, wait.
So the water doesn't...
The area you're growing fill.
So that's transited, so...
The marsh is gonna get lower than that.
So the overflow...
The marsh is lower, yes.
That's actually in conjunction with that pipe to the fix.
But the pond should maintain the water that they're collecting.
So that way, it's back up and the pipe on the road.
Because this is, because right now, this current retention pond is stuck. It's not going anywhere because everything around it is higher anyhow.
Right, it's not deep enough here.
Right, so it's just stuck there.
Right.
And then it gets...
Seventy percent of the pond is only a foot deep.
Right.
Because these stag lights that we're talking about are frag lights. Sorry. I make a joke about them, and she always corrects me, so sorry. They're only a foot under the surface, so those are the things that were, especially in the front where the pipe comes out. We want it deeper there so that the water doesn't float to the back like it's been doing, but we wouldn't like the pond to be the same depth everywhere. To create this big pool for the water to stay in instead of overflowing, because Judy can attest to this, this whole area causes problems for their road. And I'm trying to help them, in essence, not only just helping myself, but if I can keep this water in this retention pond, maybe their, their road won't overflow so much. Because it's overflowing back there. And the only other way to get around that on a road is to build a road up two feet.
Right.
Which probably, it would need two feet.
Which probably needs it anyways.
Well, it's, the cost's prohibitive back there. It's four people back there. That should have never been put in like that. The village should have never okayed that.
You have a drain pipe in your pond?
No, the road, the way the road is.
The way the road is.
It's not a road. I had an appraiser out to my house the other day, and he questioned. He said, I wanna talk about the driveway. And I said, are you talking about my driveway? And he chuckled and goes, no, the shared driveway. And I said, no, it's a road, it's the first private road. And he goes, no, it's a shared driveway. So it can't even be classified as a road. Which is really sad because it's a mess.
It is.
It's a total mess. We got 24 inches of water over it.
Right.
That's crazy.
And because everything is overflowing right now, and it's, I wish I had graphics and maps for you guys, but you know, like Chris's property that drains to the ditch, well, it's coming backwards. Anything that goes there. Now you've got the pipe coming under the road. So you got everything coming from everywhere going to the back of my property, which overflows their private road. I'm sure they're upset about it, and I would even go as far as say they might think it's my fault, but it's not, and I hope you know that. But I'm trying, I'm trying to rectify the problem to minimize their problem along with mine as well.
Is this, I think the thing you and I were talking about is, it's not like a pond that I, like, when I go to my sister's house, she's got this marvelous, beautiful pond, and we fish, and we swim, and we boat, and it's great, but this, it has runoff. It has oil, it has dirt, it has gasoline, it has, if people are using glycosates on their property or God knows what, it's all washing down. So it is not something, I'm just trying to contain it in one spot, if you will, instead of having it everywhere. You know, so it's kind of like to our expense to do it, but I think that it would be better to have it in one spot. It'd be a frog's lip in there. You know, and it will not be for a swimming hole or a fishing hole, it'll strictly be a hole that gump goes into, you know.
I think I have the same, I have a retention pond at the back, and I've actually, we see it move between probably two to three feet, you know, through the years. So mine's the same, it's not an actual pond. It was probably just there to maintain water.
It used to dry up, it was vernal.
Well, it's only a foot deep.
But you probably noticed it lately, too, because we've gotten, the freeze-thaw cycle has changed, and we've got more water. It did not dry that much.
Well, yeah, like you said, yours is a foot deep, mine is, could be six or eight, I don't even know. Yeah, it's, it's deep.
So if you look at the, the grade, there's another chart. You can see more in a better illustration of how, starting at their house. Now, mind you, this is not a flat representation because their house is here, and it comes, you know, it comes down in two directions. But for the most part, we picked an even part for them to pick the elevations, so it goes down from 105 to 104 to 102 to 99. And then the pooling water shows that it's 993, 995, so that's kind of where their backyard low spot, where they wanna fill it a little bit and dig this part deeper.
Gotcha.
So it's going from five feet to eight feet at the one side and creating a larger pond, and it's like one or two feet at the other end, and they're gonna dig that down, like just sloping from the side, so it's a walk-in, which is required so that no one can just fall in.
How's the water gonna get into that retention pond?
It's already going, right?
It's already going.
It goes there.
This is where it already sits.
Yeah, it is the lowest point, so actually, Chris's elevation is higher. So his rolls down, it comes under, and then it comes from, well, it comes from everywhere. It comes from the side, it comes from everywhere.
I'm definitely not here to throw stones at anybody because I don't want it to be misconstrued as that. But when we first purchased the property, and I actually was back there trying to cut, cut the lawn, and I literally was in almost a foot of water, I was just like, what is going on here? And I ended up going out onto the farm field through when it was all thickened. Farmer John had actually cut trenches from Chris's field, drained the water off that section where you see all the water, which is buried. I had a conversation with Shannon, Farmer John, that got buried in. So at one point, Chris was overtaking pictures three years ago of the ditch that we dug in the front, which I got with the state and the county to make sure what I did was correct, and it is. It's the code of what should be done, even though I didn't have the full permit. So we had a conversation about the water in his corner and the water in the back. Even though the trench isn't there anymore, the water's still, if it's not gonna go in a trench, that's, you know, water flows, right? It's not gonna go over something, it's gonna go under. So water still makes it, even though you see the rocks, it looks, you know, like a driveway, but it's not a permanent driveway, it's just to get back there. The water still goes under there, so I still have a flow of water coming off Chris's farm field. You know, I'm never gonna be able to stop that, even if I built a dam, I don't think I could stop it because it's gonna go under. So now you got everything coming off Chris's field, you got the pipe under the road, all making its way to this retention pond. At top of just normal rainfall, we, you know, that's obvious, too. It's gonna end up there.
So on the other side of Rochester Road, adjacent to their property, there is one sewer, and on the other side, there, next to where he's talking about the field that's what he's calling Chris's field, there's another catch basin for water. And water does sit on the other side of the street, too. There's two storm drains. So some of that water's coming under, it comes under the road to the pipe that's labeled...
Right here.
The actual...
Right through the ditch.
106, yeah.
Right through the ditch.
And then he's got a ditch, this ditch there, how's the water get to that ditch? The pipe doesn't go to that ditch.
It flows off the...
Just the road, off the road.
There's a culvert cap that's in my property that you can see, that cuts this grass around. So when, like, I got video last year, he had a pool in there last year.
Right.
Well, that made it to the culvert cap, went to the pipe. And the pipe, actually, you know where the street speed limit sign is at, the 35 mile an hour? That's where the pipe comes out onto Chris's property.
Okay, and that water's going to...
All the way back north.
So that gets back to you, okay.
Because eventually, it's supposed to make it to the drain, right?
The Leonard drain, yeah.
Essentially, that's what it's supposed to be.
That's what the Leonard drain was for, is to drain the water sitting in all the property around town.
But because of the tilt in his field, it's tilted toward our property, so it goes that way, it's not... so it goes that way, it's not tilted back to go toward the drain.
Okay.
That's a little bit of drain maintenance, Mike.
Yeah.
I feel like I fought this at another county, I was just in Dryden.
Let's see.
I, I consulted a ton of people about what we're doing, engineers that do this for a living. And I work for Detroit Arsenal, and I've consulted a few there, and they're like, you're doing everything right. You know, if you had another fifty thousand, you'd probably fix everybody's problem.
We, we have a thousand.
So I'll just show you the, the pictures that, the site review. This is the pond here. This is, this is the Leonard drain, and this is the end of their property.
Okay.
Then, uh, this is the Leonard drain. And their property is, I'm standing.
Yeah, you're standing on it, so it's over here.
Right, Leonard drain the other direction.
Yep.
Leonard drain.
Wow, and that thing's full, cause there's trees in it.
Right. So this is the back of their property. And I'll, I'll show this to Paul, too.
Oh my.
So they're trying to dig the pond to alleviate that.
Do you have, I mean, you've got confidence it'll do it, too?
So here's the pond, and they're gonna enlarge it. They're gonna enlarge it here.
Yeah, where the stump is.
They're enlarging it there, yeah.
Take out that section.
Yep.
And dig it deeper.
Right.
And then all that's gonna probably go back, I think it looks like here.
The dirt, yeah, the dirt's gonna go back there. Okay.
I mean, I-
So.
Dear to dream, we can hope, like, Scott was saying, at the beginning, the first, if we need to, are probably between-
It's just super slashy grass, yes.
It's gonna be, um, because all the, we got, we came back from off the top.
Yeah.
So this is what it is, so it's getting, we're getting, we're getting, you know, that we can take out here. That's what we're hoping that.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Absolutely. And I, and your, my part of the drain, and I'm assuming that they connect, my part of the drain doesn't look quite that bad.
Yeah.
But I do notice that, cause it runs a-
Their property is right here.
And I sit a lot, yeah, I sit a lot higher, cause I'm, I'm the beginning of the hill over on the side, but the, uh, the drain goes through my backyard, and then when it hits the Polyand Trail, there's a big, huge culvert, and it's pretty, it's pretty clogged.
It, it doesn't accept the water very well, either?
It, it does, but like you said, from getting, it's probably not moving fast enough. I mean, the culvert's probably an eight-foot culvert, it could take more. But it's probably not getting through the eight other culverts that are all-
Okay, that it is not like a chain effect.
Yeah.
Across the, across the, through.
And I'm dealing with this in Dryden right now. It's the same, same issues, um, to where the, one of the solutions was to potentially buy the house.
Okay, so.
All right.
Now we're gonna move along to read the second section. Now we've looked at the elevations and seen that it goes down, and they're gonna try to maintain the water on their property. This is just the, uh, review process. This is just the application. Okay, this was the required, um, drawing of the grade. The average grade was a hundred and seven, hundred and eight, uh, at the side of the house, then, um, a hundred and six point five. Is, uh, there's like an overall grade. So this was required for, um-
Gotcha, for the application.
For the application. So, um, does anybody in the audience have any comments, questions?
Well, I guess I don't understand, what's the height, what's the grade where the pond's gonna be? They're gonna fill in, they said where, where the grade was like ninety-three feet. So what's the grade where the pond's gonna be?
About a thousand.
What is it?
Looks like it's about a thousand.
It ranges from nine ninety-nine to thousand and one.
So they'd only be bringing up that back section a few feet.
It's still gonna be lower.
It's still gonna be lower than the pond.
But understand-
It's just flattening it out.
Right, so when, with these measurements that we took, so it comes in like this, so I had to stand to keep it straight line for you guys.
Yeah.
I was in a, a low area, but when you come up out of it, like we're talking about, where you come up the ninety-nine feet and everything, the average foot that we're looking at is ninety, nine ninety-seven, is what we're looking at. So we're, we're maintaining the grade from the top of our house all the way down. And all we're doing is filling in all the voids that are full watering, that's it.
Yeah.
Well, see, I'm having a hard time trying to understand how much water's gonna get to that pond. If it's ninety-nine, and the one around it is ninety-three. How's it gonna-
They're filling the ninety-three. Pardon? They're filling in the ninety-three.
Filling in the ninety-three. What we're doing is, the pond is overflowing, I, I mispoke, the retention pond is overflowing. So what we're doing is taking dirt out, so the water stays in it. So the dirt we're pulling out, we're leveling it in the back, we're not really grazing it much. But we wanna keep the water in it, so that nine ninety-seven I'm talking about, all we're doing is making it all the same back there, filling in all those ondulations that are back there, full watering. That's all we're doing. We're not gonna raise it higher than the highest point, cause that's, that's a bad idea, I'm all for justice.
Some of the water is gonna not make to the pond. It means it comes from a pipe from the road.
Right, right.
And some of it, i- if they're sloping it towards the pond, a little bit-
So there is a slope from the road pipe to the pond?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Dan's excavating, yeah, Dan's excavating, uh, transited in, even the overflow pipe at the back, it's in a perfect line, so the speak, so the water continues out.
That's what I didn't understand, I was gonna hustle on.
No, no.
And it just flows, how's it gonna-
No, no.
Okay, so there is, there is a trench from that pipe to the retention-
Well, yeah, it just dumps right out and-
It's a hundred and six-foot pipe that goes from Rochester Road right to the pond. It empties right into the pond.
It's a hundred and six foot from the face of the road, you've got the whole length of the road that it goes to, so you're probably talking two hundred. But again, it's, it's on the grade that it's supposed to be, we were told we could not manipulate that. So when the engineers for Dan's excavating did all the piping, they made it so, that's why it doesn't back up on this side, because that idea violation.
Cause the water was going from their yard, under the pipe, back to the other side. I knew that, I just didn't know how it's getting in the pond. If it was ninety-nine feet and everything around it was like ninety-three.
No, no, there's a pipe that just dumps right out.
Like a trench.
Yeah, it's, it's a six-inch.
Okay.
If, let's say the pond is like this.
Right.
Right at the top, it's gonna overflow to come out.
Right.
But it, it, it probably is gonna fill the pond, and only on super, super heavy rains will it ever make it to the top of the pond to go out. Most of the time, it's gonna be retained.
But then, but then it will fill my backyard.
And it will fill our backyard, yeah. And there, inevitably, there will be rains that will fill, you know, the backyard.
But especially when the ground is frozen, cause it's-
When my rains, I have dry land, and when it rains real hard, I am standing water, too. So, I mean, that's just-
Yeah, I just didn't understand how the water was getting in the pond, if it was all level, I mean. Okay, so it, it's got a ten percent chance of hitting that pot, you know what I'm saying?
Right, no.
I didn't realize it was-
The pipe is gonna-
Oh, yeah.
Fill it from the southern houses.
Okay.
And then some of the rainwater is gonna make it there, but most of it's gonna be coming in from that pipe. So, um, any other questions or comments? Um, well, Mike and I reviewed the site plan, and we went through all the re- Well, I wait till they see what they're-
It's probably looking at pictures.
Yeah.
She has the shared driveway, so she-
Right. Okay, ready? Okay, that's okay. Um, that's just public, public relations.
Well, seeing is understanding.
It is, a visual.
It made, it made sense.
A visual. Now, in regards to the book, the section in our planning, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, in the ordinance nineteen, if we wanna read-
I was gonna say, I didn't see anything, I looked in another section, but I didn't see anything now.
Okay.
So that would be the only one that I thought was-
The, uh, one of the sections in the ordinance that applies is grades, and, and basically, in building, since we don't have, uh, we don't have per se pond section in our ordinance nineteen, we have a grade section. So, uh, the grading of all lots shall be such to divert water away from buildings and prevent standing water and soil saturation detrimental to structures and lot use and surrounding property. So, uh, any yard space shall be located at such an elevation that slope and grade shall be maintained to cause the flow of surface water to run away from, uh, the walls of a structure. The balance of yard space shall be graded and adequate drainage provided where necessary to deflect proper drainage of surface waters from the sedge premises. So that's what applies to, um, their application, for their site application. Now, uh, I, looking at the plan, I see they've taken care and, and figuring out the elevations, and trying to, uh, maintain the, the water on their property would benefit their neighbors, and it'll slow the migration of water from, uh, their property to, you know, other properties. It may eventually make it there, just as it does now, but it'll slow it, help it. It's, it, it'll be, what would you say, you're doubling the size in terms of depth and-
Volume.
Volume?
Definitely it'd be greater volume.
Right.
Just because most of the first fifty feet is a foot or less. It's so shallow, that just cleaning out those frag mites and just taking it down a little bit, it'd allow us to take in so much more water up there.
Less mosquitoes, and it would benefit, uh, the community in that way.
I, I don't see it affecting anybody else. If anything, like you said, it benefits anybody behind the first property, this agricultural property, is probably going to benefit from not having, I mean, things, ultimately, the drain needs to be cleaned.
Right, but we don't know when that will happen.
I'm not gonna hold my breath.
It hasn't happened since eighty-five, why would it happen now?
Right, so this is a positive move, I see.
They're taking, all costs are associated with it, is absorbed by the resident who wants it, it's not putting it anywhere else. They're not making any kind of funky bowls, or berms, or anything to, to stop water from going where it needs to go.
So do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so, um, our discussion is, I mean, if anyone has no more comments or questions, I'd, I'd like to make a motion, um, uh, to, uh, approve the site plan with no changes. Part of the zoning ordinance says that, um, no grade on the property should prevent naturally flowing water from flowing onto their property, and may not be diverted away from the property, but the flow will be directed to an engineered grade on the property towards the lowest point of natural collection. And that would mean the pond and the Leonard drain. So making that motion to approve the site plan, can I get a second?
I will definitely second that.
So now it's gonna, um, require a vote. Now Lori has the, uh, the option of voting or not voting, uh, based on her own preference. We can, uh, allow her or not allow her, that's up to us.
I see no conflict of interest, because I think there's three of us as a, I'm assuming there's three of us as a yes. I don't think a fourth as a yes would have a negative effect.
I could go for all in favor and let Lori be last, and she, she can decide to vote or not vote. So, um, all in favor of the said, um, site plan approval? I say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Lori?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes, uh, all in favor, yay.
That's it.
So, um, what's required now is, um, I sign two copies and, uh, provide them to the village. So I will do that and take them up tonight, and, um, Lori can come back to this side of the table. So, back to my agenda. So I made the motion and you seconded it?
Yes. We were all in favor with, with, and without Lori.
Okay.
I think they've obviously done more than most people would've done by directing it themselves with a tractor.
Okay, um, where's my agenda at? You inundated me with all this paper. Yeah, I have one, I gotta have my note one.
There you go.
Okay, uh, moving along, uh, the village council update. The sewer project is, I, I attended the meeting this month,